Row call please, Kelsey.
Jovanini?
Here.
Bar?
Here.
Gil?
Here.
S. Horner?
Here.
Cawzer?
A. Horner?
Here.
Cranford?
Here.
Bradshaw?
Here.
Howard?
Here.
Willie?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, we'll open up the meeting with the meeting of the Civic Center Authority at the first meeting of the month. With no business, I will close the meeting of the Civic Center Authority. And we'll move on to a presentation of a life-saving medal. I will turn it over to Pontiac Police Officer Tyron Mitchell for her chief to give Tyron the...
Good evening, everybody. I bring you a pretty stressful story that I like to brag about. This is in reference to my charge as a medical aide and... good? In reference to a medical aide from the first part of August, on August 2nd. Officer Mitchell here was in the area. It was at our private residence. The residents are here with us tonight. And without getting too deep in weeds, but a cardiac situation. Officer Mitchell was first on the scene, began CPR immediately. I don't want to downplay it because many people have done CPR before, but this was one of the few occasions where the scene was stabilized, PFD came and resumed medical treatment after that. But personnel at the hospital said that it was 100% due to the quick CPR and quick actions that definitely saved the resident's life. So, with that being said, Officer Mitchell was nominated by the sergeant who was working that day, it's not his normal sergeant, for a life-saving medal approved unanimously. And I would like to present that here. I just wanted to share that story with you. If anybody from the audience who may be involved in that call would like to come up for a picture, you are more than welcome, but you're not obligated. Also present is... also present is Officer Mitchell's normal sergeant, Sergeant Derek Shaw. But with that being said, congratulations. Thanks, Julie. I mean, you have a life-saving medal. Appreciate it. Larry, you want to say anything or...
You won.
Okay. All right. I'll turn it over to Mr. Graves.
Thank you. My whole career in fighting for it, I never thought I'd get to see this situation like that. There again, I'm thankful that it was Officer Mitchell. It wasn't for him, numerous fighting for it. We're there. You must. But in my heart, I'm thankful. Thank you.
Thank you. Glad you're here, Larry. Glad you're still sucking air. Okay, we'll move on to our regular agenda. And the Cosent Agenda has four items for consideration. If anybody has any questions on any of those items, if not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Chan, second by Scott.
All right.
Row call please.
Bar?
Yes.
Gil?
Yes.
S. Horner?
Yes.
A. Horner?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Thank you. Item B, or A, introduction of Cheyenne Cruz, our community enrichment, by Liz, our community enrichment department head. Uh-oh.
Okay. Let's hope this works. Good evening, council. Thanks for your patience there for a couple seconds. So this evening, I would like to introduce to you our new team member for our department, Cheyenne Cruz. Cheyenne, come on up. She's going to say a few words to you guys, just tell you a little bit about what she's done in the five weeks, I think, that she's been with us now. And I've known Cheyenne for quite a few years through both of our involvement within community theater. And I'm very excited to have her a part of our team. She brings a lot of expertise in social media management and digital media and marketing. So with that, there you go. Cheyenne.
Hello. My name is Cheyenne Cruz, and I'd like to introduce myself. I'm the new Main Street Manager and Eagle Events Coordinator. I'm really excited to be stepping into this role. I grew up in the area. I graduated from Plantagenet Cornell High School, as well as Illinois State University with a degree in marketing and public relations. Over the last month, I had a chance to really dive deep into the Main Street Initiative and everything that entails, and set some short-term and some long-term goals. So on the short-term end of things, we have our first advisory panel meeting on Monday, which is going to give me a great opportunity to meet with some key players in our community and kind of get a feel for where they think we're at and where they want to go, to use that as a jumping point, to then continue setting committee meetings, as well as our monthly huddle meetings, and encourage that community involvement. I'm also working on a huge overhaul of the downtown website. If you've been on it recently, you've probably noticed a lot of changes that are slowly happening. I really want to make that a place for people to go to for information, not only about their businesses, but events that are happening downtown as well. On the event end of things, we have some exciting things coming up as we end the year. We have trick-or-treating downtown with the businesses on October 25th from 11:00 to 2:00. We have the Christmas tree displays and the light parade happening. Those applications actually open up to the public on Monday, and then the light parade will be on November 28th. And then last year, we did paroling with Nathan, and that was a huge hit. We loved that downtown, so we'll be doing that again, as well as pairing that with the downtown Christmas mart to get people downtown and shopping for the holiday season, to not only support local vendors, but also the small businesses downtown. And then finally, we'll be ending the year with the last night celebration. On the long-term side of things, I have the pleasure of meeting with Eric Reader, who is the Illinois Main Street Director. He came in for a site visit last week, and we had a really cool opportunity to kind of discuss Main Street and the forward points of that and kind of what that means for me and the future of this position. So on the design side of things, the Downtown Upstairs Initiative will not only be able to help increase downtown traffic, but also housing, and it's aligning with the cities for an outfit study. We really want to dive deeper into seeking some investments for the downtown buildings and making these what is called white box ready, so that these purchases can be left in the name for potential investors, as well as on the website, having an option for you to understand things about grants and tax incentives that are available to the downtown businesses, as this is something that I think can help alleviate some of that financial concern and fear that may occur when wanting to start a business. On the organization side of things, reconvening with the advisory committee is really that first step on building off these points going forward, because they're the ones who are interested in better, they know what's going on, and being able to get that feedback from them is going to be really helpful, as well as those monthly huddles, just being able to talk to the community a little bit more if you need to go there. On the promotion side of things, obviously, the website overhaul is a huge thing. I really want that to be the go-to place for information. And then the social side, to keep that fun and lighthearted, promoting all the specials, the events, and great things that are going on within our local businesses, to continue promoting for them in the ways that we can, as well as working on an event calendar for 2026, going into the centennial celebration. We want to make sure that we're prepared and ready, and we have some great things for not only our local community, but everybody coming into the community. Finally, on the economic vitality side, we are putting a large focus on getting the Boom Tracker updated, ready to go, and usable. This tool will allow us a lot stronger knowledge of what buildings are for sale, for lease, owned, empty, whatever may be going on in them, as well as benefit that Downtown Upstairs Initiative, knowing what is available there. Having this is just a great resource for everybody to go to one centralized location to get all this information for not only potential investors, but also realtors, potential business owners, things like that. Finally, one of the big things we talked about was the business potential expansion visits. We're looking to have four to five of these monthly downtown businesses, and these are just intentional meetings for like 30, 45 minutes. And we really want to talk to the business owners about what some of their potential pain points may be, where they're struggling, and provide resources to them so that they stay downtown, they stay open, and also better understand where we, as the Main Street Initiative, can benefit them. So that is all I have. Thank you.
I have a question. I don't know what a boom tracker is.
So it is a system that, when you go into it, it allows you to see what is available within a limit, like in an area. So we set up our downtown area, and when you go into that, you'd be able to be like, okay, there's this many buildings that are available for purchase, there's this many that are available for leasing. It's just a centralized location to kind of get all that information on what is happening with the actual physical buildings downtown.
Booms is a service of the Illinois Main Street. And so this database has already been supplied with GPS data, so it has the building's overlay, and so we can add our information to it, who the owner is, who the contacts are, so make it a robust site.
White box ready. What does... Help me understand that.
Yeah, so the idea of that is basically just the building being ready for someone to come into and make it their own space, but not having to do extensive repairs, whether that be on the ceiling, the walls, the floor, whatever that means, just something that is ready for them to step into and kind of just make their own present, having to do extensive repairs.
I guess other than that, you seem to be a very busy lady. I'm impressed.
Yeah, that's all new to me, and it really dovetails with some of the other things we're talking about with regards to places to rent and things downtown, so I like that. I'd like to know more as we move along.
Definitely.
Anybody else have any questions for Cheyenne? Thank you. Item B, approval of the change order number one for pickleball sewer work. Hopefully, it's change order only number.
So we were notified by Farnsworth Group that during the construction, where the initial sewer line was believed to be, it's not exactly lined up where they thought it was, so there's some added expense in moving that sewer work. Originally, the contract was $396,000. This would add $13,514 to it for the new contract sum of $409,514. And being that we don't have a way of GPS-ing our service lines, this kind of thing happens from time to time. When you rip up the ground, you find things aren't exactly where you thought they were.
Any questions? I would entertain a motion for approval of the change order.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jamie, second by Chan. Row call please.
Gil?
Yes.
S. Horner?
Yes.
A. Horner?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Bar?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C, information on the ambulance transfers. I believe Chief Campbell is going to give us a little bit of an update. And you all have a sheet, I believe, that was laid out in front of you for that.
Good evening, Mayor, City Administrator, and City Council. At our last City Council meeting, we tried to officially approve an operational announcement recommended by the Pontiac Fire Department in response to the significant and ongoing increase in emergency incidents and interfacility transfer requests over the past two years. Following that meeting, the City of Pontiac and the Fire Department jointly issued a press release explaining these changes and helped inform the public of what was being done and why. However, I recognize that due to audio issued during the last meeting, many in the community may not have clearly heard the discussion, so the rationale behind that decision. That is why it follows important to stand before you tonight, provide a clear public explanation of what these changes entail, and to present the facts about what the Pontiac Fire Department and community have committed to survival. So let me state clearly. With the council's approval two weeks ago, the Pontiac Fire Department will begin phasing out hospital-to-hospital facility transfers on May 1st, 2026. This decision was not made lightly, but it is necessary to ensure that we continue to deliver high-quality emergency medical services to our residents. That said, I want to emphasize what we will continue to provide. One, we will continue to provide non-emergency transportation from a local hospital to nearby nursing homes, in line with our current agreements with NACOLA, healthcare, goldwater care, and even more. Two, we will continue returning transportation from local residents from the hospital back to their homes, including those in hospice care. Three, we will still provide STEMI transports, which are cardiac-related emergencies, from our local hospital to higher-level care facilities, as required, or as requested by the hospital and at the homes as well, ensuring that time-sensitive cardiac patients receive the care they need as quickly as possible. Since the announcement, I received several questions and concerns, especially regarding whether this change meant that we would no longer provide EMS transport services to the City of Pontiac, Pontiac Road Fire Protection District, and the Cornell Fire Department jurisdiction. Let me be absolutely clear, Pontiac Fire Department will continue to provide EMS transport services for all of those areas, without interruption to the highest professional standards. This operational change affects only the category of interfacility hospital-to-hospital transfers. We're adjusting in order to protect and preserve our ability to protect emergencies. We are not stepping away from EMS responsibilities. On the contrary, we're doubling down on ensuring that we can keep our responsibilities without compromise. Now, more than ever, it is crucial that all city officials, council members, department heads, and community leaders, use with one consistent voice when discussing this issue publicly. This information, even when unintentional, can create confusion and unnecessary concern in the community. To help with this, I have prepared an information sheet for all city leadership that explains the changes in services that we continue to provide. This document is intended to ensure we are all aligned in our messaging, moving forward. In closing, I want to thank all of you for supporting this operational shift, and I want to thank the public for your continued trust in us. The men and women of the Pontiac Fire Department are proud to serve this city. We remain fully committed to the health, safety, and well-being of everyone in our jurisdiction. I can promise you the Pontiac Fire Department is here for you today, tomorrow, and into the future. Thank you. We're open to any questions at this point in time.
Great job.
I'm McGuire.
Thanks, Chief. If any of you heard any of the backlash after our meeting, this is why it's so important that we get out the right story and truly make everyone understand clearly what is happening, way too many gray areas that they thought about. Item D, approval of the speed reduction school zone designation on Indiana Avenue at Grace Christian School. I'm not sure who's... Chris is handling this. Yeah, I guess.
I will repeat a request from Grace Christian School, which is housed in the First Christian Church on Indiana Avenue. They've asked for the school's speed limit to be extended down past their facility. As was the request in this site, we're governed by the MUTCD, which is the Uniform Traffic Control Devices. It's about that thick and covers... If you need something to go to sleep at night with, that's the book. So anyway, it does require engineering input, which we did seek for by inadvertent. And after reviewing it, we felt it was warranted to go ahead and extend that. But in order to do so, we do need council approval. So we would extend it. Currently, it starts at Elm Street and goes to Ominai. We would just continue that down through Seminole Drive, which would be the entrance to Brookside subdivision. And then additionally, on Kirkwood, because that street adjoins the school as well, we've put in just a school advanced warning sign since the stadium is already 20 in that street. And that would be the little sign here with two people on it. That's the sign up there. So I'll answer any questions and ask for your approval to do so.
Any comments by anyone or questions for Chris? If not, I'll entertain a motion. John?
I'll second.
Second by Barb. Row call please.
S. Horner?
Yes.
A. Horner?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Bar?
Yes.
Gil?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie, for fielding that.
Thank you, Chris.
Item E is discussion on the commercial outdoor Christmas tree.
Yep, I'll start this off. You have in your packet two choices. As we were looking at commercial outdoor Christmas trees, the first one is the majestic mountain pine from Holiday Concierge. And you'll see that about a 20-foot tree, fully decorated, is about $25,000, is $24,754. The second one begins with this blue page, and it's from... There's a quote in here from Holiday Outdoor Decor. And that one is an 18-foot panel tree with lighting, and that total is $12,651.25. As we've been, as we've been talking numerous times about what is the best route to take with a, with a Christmas tree, there's a number of factors that we would take into consideration, is the time of staff to find a tree, to get a tree, to cut the tree down, bring it, install it, and tighten it down, and then remove it, versus the time for a commercial tree to take it down and put it up each year. And then the other option that we have talked about was some other design or planting a live tree down in that area. So live tree, its main issues would be care of the tree, and, you know, it's a tree, so it could last forever, it could get a disease, just one of those things, so. So we also talked about, if you put a live tree down in there, we discussed before that soil is bad down there, but Chris has stated... that the soil is bad down there, but Chris has stated that if we were taking a tree, we can remove soil and put in the right soil that where a tree would survive down there, talking like a blue spruce or something of that nature down in that area. So, you know, as staff, we just come with some options and to get some direction on where the city would like to go.
I'll open up the conversation. I'm in favor of a live tree. I think it's a sustainable activity that could be there for 30, 40, 50 years. Perhaps it's not, but I don't believe it's prudent of us to spend even $12,000 because that's only going to last maybe five years, maybe 10, and then we're buying another one that's going to cost twice that much. And we could watch a tree grow. Maybe it's not going to be 20 feet to start with, but it would eventually get there. Maybe we plant more than one in case one doesn't. Those are just a few thoughts, but that's my thoughts, so.
You don't have to take it down and put it up.
You don't have to take it down and put it up.
How large of a live tree can you transplant?
Yeah, can you start with how big of one do we know?
I would defer to my tree expert back there.
From the nurseries that we deal with, we can probably get an eight-footer or a 10-footer. That'd probably be about the biggest. Because that'd be a pretty big root ball.
We do our artificial ones down there now. What size trees are those, about 15, 20 feet?
You mean the ones we cut down? Yeah, those were like 20.
It varies by what we can find. Last year was a big tree because we found one somebody wanted to get rid of. That was probably pushing 20 feet.
Typically, have we bought those or are they donated?
They're donated, and we just have time and labor and cutting them and putting everything together. We did buy one one time, two years ago.
You know, we had even glows a couple of years ago.
Seven or 800, I think, when we bought it.
Any idea?
To buy a tree, to plant, you know, you're probably talking, probably dealing with $1,000.
I was, I just bought 28 Arbor Whitey. I was looking at a blue spruce down there.
You'd want a traditional pine of some sort.
Blue spruce is.
Don't all grow at the same rate?
Right.
Would you want a more hardwood that's going to grow slower? Or, I mean, like, I don't, you know, there's like 500 different kinds of conifers.
Yeah, so depending on how tall you want it to get, you know, some blue spruces can get 60 foot tall. We have some Arbor Whitesies that are by the old chair factory. They were planted in the, probably the early 90s, mid 90s, and they're, they're about 20-foot.
Do you want to share, Sarah, what you're?
Yeah, so I actually have a team lead at work that owns a Christmas tree farm, and so I got his take on this, and he, like Chris said, recommended a blue spruce on it. And you can get, like you said, an eight-foot one, all balled up and ready to go, and you have to water it and whatever, but it's a nice one. Some of the pines can change colors in the fall. Not the best-looking one, but also it's perfect shape for a Christmas tree. And so then you have it right there every year. You have the initial investment in it, and as long as we take care of it, in 20 years, that thing could be 20-foot tall. So we could put, get one, eight-foot one for this year. I don't know if you want to get smaller ones to have different sizes as they grow, but it depends on what Chris recommends on that. But I think that's a good tree to have, and I think it's a good investment just to put it down, and then you don't have to keep spending money every year on this, so.
We can watch it grow.
Yes.
And we get a lot of, our ears fall from citizens wondering what we thinking spending all that money on this or that or the other thing? And I think this, getting the artificial tree is just too far, too much, and more questions of our sanity.
It doesn't have the same charm. It doesn't have the same charm.
No.
And I would agree with that, too. Yeah.
It's a whole-town feel, is what it is.
It's like a Charlie Brown Christmas.
Exactly. Who doesn't like Charlie Brown?
Well, you know.
The effect, the effect.
You want a motion for a real tree, then? If that's.
Can we get more information on a real tree? I mean, do we motion? I think everybody kind of likes the idea of a real tree, but we can't, like, approve a real tree, can we?
Don't have a.
Right, we don't have it on the agenda.
Right, right. This is just for discussion.
This is just for direct staff.
If you direct staff, we'll put together the numbers.
It's probably too late in the season to, to plant a new tree.
It is not.
No, it's not.
I bought 20 Arbor Whitey.
Yep, that's usually, actually, that's when I do plant my trees, is in the fall. Because that way they got all winter, all the winter moisture.
And that's what I've been doing wrong.
Right by my flower beds.
Do we need a motion to direct them or just this is enough?
I, consensus is, that's the consensus.
Is that the consensus?
We know what.
Then, yeah, okay. Okay. Item F, information on police firearms. I would presume Chief Davis is going to take this on? Who just had a birthday, by the way? Happy birthday.
So, in a nutshell, this is just a basic story about the type of pistols that we use in the police department. Historically, we've kind of gone on a seven-year cycle just because that is the lifeline, give or take, with the amount of different qualifications that guys do every year. Currently, like I say, we've had six-hour pistols for five and a half years, and recently, you may or may not have heard in nationwide media, but they're apparent, they can be prone to just spontaneously discharging while in a holster while not even touching anything like that. I'm not concerned about that because, well, A, unfortunately, ours is not a problem. We've made modifications to certain things. They, the problem with pistols made before 2017, all of ours were after 2017. However, where it's been a catalyst for me to come talk to you guys about it now is that there's a growing bandwagon of academies in our local range that are blanket banning six-hour pistols being allowed in home range. I have two at the academy right now that they were in week two, and they said, well, you can use our loaners until you have, have something else, which isn't great for, you know, they're learning how to use pistols, and you shouldn't be switching all around.
Is that all Sig Sowers or just?
P320.
The 320.
So, I mean, I don't have, like, final quotes or anything. I just wanted to come and tell you guys this is kind of where it's thrust upon us kind of in the 11th hour by both, both of the academies that we tend to use as well as the state police range in town have or are in the process of waiting for papers to be signed to ban these police on the property. I think there's about 15 or 20 lawsuits, none have been settled. Not that I've heard that anything's been settled or proven or being actual, but like I say, with the limited resources there are to double-check and make sure all of our pistols are on the safe side, they say they are. However, it's not enough convinced.
And they actually ran it by me, and, you know, if there's any doubt about it, if there would be an incident down the road, then we could be questioned for continuing to use something that was apparently identified to have some form of manufacturing defect. And I'm like the chief, I'm not 100% convinced ours are, but if there were some kind of accidental discharge down the road, it could be an issue in any litigation if someone were hurt, if an officer was injured, if we continued to use the pistol that shoots itself. So I think from a pure, besides the fact they need to train on something, and their training ability is going to disappear if they can't use it at the range, and I guess the ultimate conservative, do the right thing. It's not that huge of investment to change. They're all going to stay the same caliber. The ammo will still work. It's just a matter of the platform, and platforms have come a long way since the Sig Sower 320. So they've got a lot of options out there, and I'll leave that to the department to determine what's the best for them. But if there's any potential issue that could happen, given the fact it's a firearm and, you know, a discharge could be catastrophic, it's probably best to move on right now.
And if you don't know, just so you know, the financial aspect of it, a police firearm, we can, we're able to buy them at a rate cheaper than what a civilian can. So typically, he'll probably find them in the $500 to $700 range per pistol. We have 19 officers.
How many?
Nineteen.
Is there how many pistols you have, too?
I'm sorry.
Is there how many pistols you have, too, or do you have?
No, we have, we have a few spares. Yeah, yep. Things happen from time to time, and you have to send them in, so.
Any attachments that we currently have, anything in the future, we would look to ensure that we can use the same attachments on the pistol.
What do you think you'd be looking at?
The limited homework I've done so far, I really like the Springfield Armory Ensign. We had Springfield in the past, had zero problems with them.
You guys just went to Sig, what, like, five, six years ago?
Five and a half, yep. So that's another, I mean, we're five and a half years into that, it's a seven-year transition anyway, but I don't like the fact that, I guess, it forces our hand a little bit very continually.
It's a pretty big national movement that's going on against Sig Sowers, P320, that there was an airman that was killed by a discharge, and so the Air Force canceled their entire contract, and they switched, and that was led off a firestorm, pretty much. And it is, the P320 is pretty much outside of the Glock, the number-one law enforcement used firearm. So it's not, this is not just a Pontiac PD thing. Bloomington PD's Sig P320, Dwight PD, Sig P320, most of the departments you're going to find carried that firearm because it was mass manufactured for law enforcement.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Item G is struck from the agenda for no, no action there on that one. And so we'll move to item H, our fiscal year '26 first-quarter financials.
Yep. Don't have a lot of notes. If you have any questions, if you, or if you want to just, as you go through them, if you have questions, let me know. Couple of quick notes. You would see, first off, on the first page, the cemetery is really the only department that looks out of whack on there, and that's because they, right away, we purchased a vehicle that was, that cemetery is not a high-budget department, so that vehicle makes that percentage look higher. And just other notes, as you go through them, you'll, we just got in our property tax, so most of those lines, the TIF, and the revenue lines that show the property tax is not in there yet. We just got it in August, so that's still to come. And you would notice municipal band doesn't have anything in that payroll. We just received it, so that's typically late September, October, when we do band payroll, and that's going to be roughly $30,000 somewhere in that area for their payroll. And then the only other thing is golf and the rec center. As you look at those, keep in mind the seasonality of those departments. Golf's expenses will be more, and then they're going to taper off before the end of the year because golf will slow down, and there won't be a lot of maintenance and those types of things. And the rec center, the rec center revenues actually pick up during the winter. In the summertime, the Parks Department, most of things are outside. So as wintertime comes, we get more events inside the rec center. So you'll see those revenues pick up in the winter. Other than that, everything was pretty much on track. We're about 25% on most of the payrolls, no big outliers in any of that stuff, so. If anyone had any questions, or like I said, as, as you get any, please feel free to just shoot me an email or a call, and I'll let you know.
Great.
That is the other piece of great reading, in addition to the MUTCD, so.
People like numbers, some people do. Okay, Mayor's comments, I don't have a lot. I, I perused through downtown today and spoke with all the business owners on the block here that are adjacent to Centennial Plaza, giving them an update that demolition is going to begin within the hours, probably sometime this week, to get, you know, make sure they knew that we aren't leaving them out in the dark there and if they had any concerns moving forward. But I think everybody seemed pretty content that it wasn't going to be too much bother to them. I, I'll let Jim speak or someone speak about the parade. I was out of town on a prior commitment that I made months ago, Sunday, so I missed the parade, but I heard it was great. It was a beautiful day, and it sounds like the restaging area went okay, but maybe someone else has a different story on that. Otherwise, I, I don't know if everybody read their sewer newsletter, but I'm doing three events next week with, called Conversation with Kelly, three opportunities for people to come and just ask me questions. So those are Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of next week at different times at three different locations throughout the city. And maybe, maybe lots of people will come, maybe nobody will come, but you're, any of you are welcome to come at the same time if you'd like. It would be great to have someone else there in case there's questions, but I don't, I hope for no trouble. That's about all I have. So I'll turn it over to City Council if anybody has any comments.
I went golfing at the, well, I, actually, I wasn't golfing, I was riding along, but that meant that I could look out on the, I was informed that the big green part is the fairway.
Right?
At the Elks or the Oaks. And they looked, I don't know if it's because it's late in the season, but to a non-golfer, they looked really bad. Like, there was, they were really patchy, and then there was, I don't know, like, some of the greens are also, they looked unkempt and bumpy. So I don't know if, I've heard from other people who are golfers that it's, they would rather go golf at Wolf Creek. Do we, is there, like, regular maintenance on those, like, fairways and stuff? Because it doesn't look like it from a non-golfer, and that's from a non-golfer, and I just found out what those things are called, the fairway. And from what I've seen on TV, they look really nice and green.
Those on TV have a little more money.
Right, right. Yeah, we can't compare with that.
Nice and green, because I have ridden along both at Wolf Creek, again, not golfing, just riding along. But the difference is noticeable, and it kind of makes you feel like, ooh, I mean, this has the city's name on it now, and it doesn't really look that great. So I didn't know if they, if it's just because it's late in the season or.
Could some of our problem be that maybe the people doing the mowing, as ridiculous as it may seem to a layman, is not done with the utmost care, and sometimes it's more of a NASCAR track when they're mowing than it is a steady, even pace that'll keep mowers from bouncing and skinning the top of the surface? Are we cutting our grass at the right height?
You know, I play three, four times a week, and people from Bloomington said it's as good as Bloomington Country Club. So I know last week, we had, when it had all the rain, they got out some cutting, and it was a little rough. But overall, our greens are very fast. It's a beautiful course. I mean, I've played courses from Peoria to here, and, and my wife plays three, four days a week, so we've been out, and we've thought it was fine. I, I know there's probably with rain and grass, but I just had my eye doctor tell me from Ottawa area, he prefers to come to our course. He's a golf coach, so. Alan, you got a lot of family at golf, don't you?
Yeah, they're up and down. They would tell you the greens are slow.
Oh, my gosh, I think they're fast.
I mean, if they don't step in 12, they're not very happy. I've got a stimp meter at home to check the grain. So the bottom line is, they want them to play like the ones on TV. And I've walked on the ones on TV, and I'm telling you, it's like walking on carpet. I mean, really soft, I mean, the under stuff, we have problems, I mean, it was $60,000 on chemicals, something like that. And it's a matter of maintenance, Mother Nature doesn't cooperate. cooperate, we get ponding, like behind my house on 17, we get water standing.
Yeah, there's been a lot of water.
Water standing's terrible for grass, and we get funguses, and some are controllable and some aren't, and I played, my daughters play, my Allie, my oldest daughter, played at Itasca Country Club for a tournament a while back. The fairways, the rough was phenomenal. The greens, our greens were better, they weren't as fast because they weren't as, cut as tight and rolled as hard, but they, one of the greens had more patches on it than I've ever seen, you know, where they take off of an area where they grow patches and put it on there, there was that 17th hole, I never saw a patched up green like that, I don't know what happened to it, some disease or something, but my girls will tell you that's nothing against the Oaks ownership, but the city's budget for, and I think they changed suppliers of chemicals and have spent some more on it, it's a work in progress for sure. It, the, there's an issue with some of the irrigation, you know, some areas are better irrigated than others, the irrigation on the 17th green will cost ponding every single night, when I walk, I walk at night about nine o'clock and you can watch water glistening in the ponds on the green, you know, it's just the flow, it's, the greens are supposed to be designed for the water to flow off, and apparently there's some ponding going on there. But there is a lot of progress, I tend to agree with Chan, that, you know, I watched the guys mowing out the back and they wanted to get it done as quick as they can, and I watched, and Atasca, they were going ahead of the golfing group, we were the second group, and they were all the way to the point of when they, they cut them, they had the big blowers behind a tractor to blow the grass off into the rough.
Yeah, that's nice.
And, you know, they were just staying ahead, so I watched them, and they were taking their time like they were a gardener taking care of the king's grass, and there probably is a little bit of that, you know, but overall, you know, we have, I agree, you know, with Scott, and I've been at Wolf and the Oaks too, and I would prefer, or the Oaks, and I prefer, I still call it the Oaks, I'm sorry, but I, I would prefer the Oaks, you know, the Wolf Creek's irrigate, back in the day, I mean, it had no irrigation at all, so it was a real problem, but they've come a long, long way there. The character of the course is good, you know, we get a lot of outsiders, my girls bring people here, Sean Kennedy does the, Sean Kennedy does the youth groups come in here, they always have one or two tournaments here, we had, I think, was it the state US senior, or the state senior qualifier was here?
Couple weeks ago.
Which, you know, that's a pretty good event to pick a course like the Oaks to play, state championship qualifier. So, I, yes, can it be improved? The answer is absolutely yes, and probably a whole host of things, a bigger budget, working on some areas, I know they don't like sand traps, but our sand traps stink, you know, and more sand traps would be better, I mean, instead of taking them out, some of the former locations were good locations for sand.
I like playing on the beach.
There you go. Well, and they are, you know, the ones that are just now ground under repair, you know, so there's a lot to be done, but you know, the club, I watch out my window and I see the number of rounds being played, and if anybody in the community was a naysayer, we see people from all walks of life playing, it's not all guys with the TV golf outfits, we got guys in t-shirts and cutoffs playing, that, people that maybe you need to swing a club, because we got people that don't look like they've ever swung before, and they're, they're having fun, they're out there having fun doing it, bringing their kids, so, you know, it's become a family activity, and I, I think that's real positive, I tend to be a pretty good supporter of it, and.
And I think we have the potential for an incredible course, there's no doubt about that, we have a really good foundation, we have a great course to work from, just maybe a little fine tuning with the folks that take care of it, could solve some of the problems, not all of them obviously, but.
And it's not the longest course, so some of the big hitters are going to say it's too short, some of the shorter hitters are saying they want more front tees.
Are your daughters saying the course is too short?
Yeah, though they play from, they play.
They play from the tips.
They play, they don't play, they have played from the tips, but usually they play from the whites, and the sad part of it is, you know, I'm a over 200-pound adult male and I'm 50 yards shorter than Allie, on a good day, so, you know, I'm not hitting my seven iron 180, so that's a problem.
I think it's getting better every year, is the thing, and it does take time, and I see them out there, I mean, I'm on the first green, that's where my condo is, and they're out there early, and if I have my windows open, they wake me up very early, and that's fine, and I think as far as the city of Pontiac, we've got that course, which is fantastic, and then we have Wolf up there within driving distance as well, so we have two very good courses that bring in people and bring in outings and everything, and I think also as you have outings throughout the season, I think that's where you kind of see some wear and tear as well, but I think, overall, I think this, the tee boxes and everything in general out at the Oaks, I think this is one of the better years I've seen, and it just gets better every year, so I think it's just going to take time, and like I said, I don't golf, I ride.
Yeah, but you can tell grass if it has swatches and if it's dead or whatever.
So, my friend was golfing, and so she was like, "Would you say something?" I said, "Well, sure, of course," so, from a non-golfer.
Shannon has a lot of expertise in that area, he's probably limited with budget and manpower, and again, hiring, I've just got to assume it's a challenge like it is for all businesses to hire people that are, really care, you know, a lot of them do, you know, we've had a lot of volunteers, Paul Miller for years.
Still out there.
Out there working, and he, those people care, that, some of them aren't golfers themselves, so they don't understand, you know, occasionally a pull behind mower might whack a tree, which we'd prefer not to have happen, but I think we've come a long ways, and it is a higher priority now that it's proved it's to be successful part of the Parks Department, you know, you weren't on the council at the time it was acquired, there was a lot of negativity about, you know, catering to, quote, lead or whatever, and that has not been the case at all, it's been a very much community-oriented thing, and we can use the facility for Independence Day celebrations, other things, it's a good multipurpose facility, we used it before with the consent and acquistance of the Elk Club, so.
There have been a lot more outings, I mean, I had a tee, I had a tee time the other day and Shannon was, they were scrambling because some, the cigar group from somewhere around Bloomington had called and like 50 guys were coming up to play, I mean, that's great, and that's 50 people coming and they're going to golf, go eat lunch, see the town, that's, yeah, six, I know there was six or seven extra golf outings scheduled this year on top of last year, and there's been about five, six more impromptu, and I know that can be rough with keeping up with the course when you have.
It's a nice problem to have.
And we do still have some abuses, we, I watch every day, especially the people that aren't the regular avid golfers, the carts get too close to the greens, you know, if the greens are muddy or it should be cart path only, they're leaving ruts, you know, there's a little lack of maintenance respect, and that happens.
Golf etiquette.
You know, they've, they've done overall a very good job, and probably, if you ask my daughters, too good, because they have to go other places to play when there's outings and things, you know, and we don't longer have the, quote, private, private type of course, you know, you've got to share.
Anybody else, council comments, Mike, you have something?
I just want to make another segue back to Centennial Plaza with just a quick question to Liz. My board meeting with the Heritage Corps is coming up in that Route 66 grant, I'm assuming your project is associated with that, that you're going to apply for eventually?
Yeah, I already, I, I just spoke to Bob Navarro about it today, so, well, yeah.
Any other council comments?
I've had several inquiries about dogs running loose, and I can attest to one of them, myself was watching television and it was looking in my window. We get more dog tickets than anything else in the summertime, so, problem is, we don't have dog control, we don't have officers that catch dogs, you basically don't complain, I think, and do we have a full-time county dog?
Yes, definitely.
And then the county has to take care of it, they get their own, they have their own ticket system that goes through the Livingston County State's Attorney's Office, not ours, but we have had some issues with, we had one, the ticker, there was a little cover sheet on the ticker, it was dog versus chicken, the dog next door got somebody's chicken, and then I found out, I asked the lady about the chicken, and I said, "How do you get the chicken out of the coop? They tear up the coop, well, the kids were playing with it," so, you know, so they weren't following the rules just exactly either, but we do, we do have a lot of issues with that, and a lot of non-clean-up issues with people walking their dog, but overall, most people are responsible dog owners, we got a few that aren't, obviously.
So, there's a Bob Dylan song, and he says, "If dogs can win free, why can't we?"
Anybody else? Okay, city administrator.
Just a quick note, as you, if you recall, we, the city, we bid our electric supply for city buildings through NYMEC, and just so you know, we, we've been, we had it, we got a fixed rate which was higher than what it had been in the past of 8.048 cents per kilowatt, and right now the commed summer rate is 10.028, so we're saving, if that were in a year, we would save $64,448, so just, just so you know, and for the residents, the electrical aggregation, we're still in that contract where it's matching commed, so.
So, we're looking at the community solar, correct? Did we talk about that?
Correct, yes, yeah.
Because there was a, a board meeting for the county, and they had a really, really, really solid presentation, different than ours, much more aggressive, but I know that the county's looking at that as well because of the high cost of, of delivery of, of electricity, so.
And the other thing I have a need for a couple committees, Public Properties and Utilities Committee, we have a few things to go over, that's going to be a, a big one. We want to just talk about Fell Park, sewer plant, Brad needs to give an update on how things are going there, that Public Properties covers a sewer plant as well as Block 59, and in addition to that, Infrastructure covers zoning and building and municipal code, and we want to discuss those nuisance ordinances.
Yes.
I have those two committees, Public Properties and Infrastructure.
Do you want to know who's on? Can you call out?
Sure.
So, Infrastructure is Jovanini, Willie, Barr, Bradshaw, and Gil. Public Properties is Coser, Cranford, Jovanini, Horner, Anna, and Gil.
You got dates in mind?
So, I think next week is a good week for me, and again, we've been Tuesdays, Wednesdays, typically, what's that?
I'm on both those committees and I'm in Dallas next week.
Okay.
I'm in town on Monday, if you want to do Monday, I'd be glad to do that.
Monday, the 8th.
I'm available on Monday.
I'm available on Monday.
I've got three things ready.
So, from Public Properties, we're, we're talking Monday, how many can't make it? Just John?
I'm not on that one anyways.
Hmm?
Is John on Public Properties, Jamie?
Um, no.
Okay, so.
He's only on Infrastructure.
Okay, so Public Properties, everybody was available.
That's Jerry, Scott, Frank, Anna, and Chan. So, you could do that on Monday. One problem solved.
What time?
Yes. Time I'm open to, so, typically, we've been going 5:30, 6:00, sometimes we've gone 4:30, so whatever is best for you guys.
I can do 5:00.
5:00?
I can't get away from the restaurant before 5:00.
Sure.
It's Monday.
Monday. Monday, 5:00 PM works for Public Properties.
So, Infrastructure is Jovanini, Willie, Barr, Bradshaw, and Gil. So, if you're only available on Monday, you're not available on Monday, we either have to do it without one person or we have to do it.
I'm available any day, any evening that week, right?
I can do any evening that week.
Any day.
So, I think Public Properties is probably going to last over an hour, so maybe we move, we don't do it on the same day as Monday, and maybe move it to either Tuesday or Wednesday, just, just so we're not.
Yep.
Pressing them.
Either's fine with me.
So, Tuesday?
Tuesday's fine with me.
5:00?
Okay.
5:00, okay.
Infrastructure.
Yep.
That's it, that's all I have.
I won't be at our next council meeting, John will be running the meeting for me, so you guys can have a party. Just don't cause him to vote in a tie.
Yeah.
Okay, with no further business, I would ask for a motion to adjourn, Scott Cranford, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned, thank you.